Okay, we're gonna start the meeting here in a minute or so. Hope everybody's ready. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Dania Beach. This is the Dania Beach City Commission Regular Meeting, Tuesday, May 28, 2024, just after 7:00 PM. Can I please have a roll call, please, clerk?
Yes, Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaWellen.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Savino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
Deputy City Manager Candido Sosa Cruz.
Here.
Mary Eva Corm.
All right. Yes, we have our deputy manager here, Candido Sosa Cruz. Our madam manager Garcia is out with, uh, she's pretty sick right now, so let's all hope that she has a speedy recovery and we'll see her back. All right, if everybody could please bow their heads for a moment of silence. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, yeah. I'll do it at the end. Okay, item 3.1 is Alzheimer's Glow Initiative. This is sponsored by Commissioner Joyce Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight we have Ms. Melissa Lewis here from Innovating Great Minds, and she will tell us a little bit more about the Alzheimer's Glow Initiative.
Amazing. Good evening, everyone, and commissioners, um, and mayor, of course. Uh, my name is Melissa Lewis. I am a leader, a part of Leadership Broward, and I am also a small business owner of a marketing company here in Fort Lauderdale. Um, today I wanted to, you know, uh, just gratefully thank you all for the opportunity to address you today and present a proposal, uh, that's of great significance for our community. Today I bring the Alzheimer's Glow Initiative for a project aimed at illuminating Dania Point Fountain at City Hall with purple lights during Alzheimer's Awareness Month in November. As many of you may already know, Alzheimer's disease poses a significant challenge to our community, especially in he- here in Florida with over 185,000 residents in South Florida. Our state stands as the epicenter of the debilitating disease with nearly 1 million people affected statewide. This init- initiative seeks to shed light on this pressing issue and rally our community together in support of those affected by Alzheimer's. The essence of the Alzheimer's Glow Initiative lies in the symbolism of lighting the Dania Point Fountain with purple lights. Purple signi- uh, indicates the color of Alzheimer's Awareness Month and combines the calm stability of blue and passion of red making the strong relentless fight against Alzheimer's and all other dementias. By illuminating the fountain, we aim to visually represent our community's commitment to raising awareness about Alzheimer's and supporting those impacted by the disease. This initiative not only aligns with our city's values of public health and community engagement, but also serves as a beacon of hope for residents. The benefits of this initiative means not only raising awareness about Alzheimer's, but carries immense benefits for our community. By destigmatizing the disease, we can create a more supportive environment for individuals and families facing Alzheimer's locally. Early detection becomes more attainable in the community and community support networks can flourish within. Ultimately, this initiative has the potential to positively impact countless lives within Dania Point. This collaborative measure is also associated directly with the local Florida chapter of the Alzheimer's Association. They are honoring social media campaigns such as Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and TikTok to amplify our message of awareness and encourage community involvement in Alzheimer's-related initiatives. Together, we can make a significant difference in the lives of those affected by Alzheimer's. In terms of budget, we are asking Dania to cover the cost of the lights as a gift to the community. Timelines for installation and removal would be November 1st to the November 30th. And lastly, in closing to all of you, I just wanted to say thank you again gratefully for your time. Um, and in the support of all the Alzheimer's Glow Initiative, by approving the proposal and allocating the necessary resources, together let us illuminate hope and raise awareness about Alzheimer's in our community. Your support is invaluable to this endeavor, and I am confident that with the backing of all of you, we can make a meaningful impact, and thank you for your time and consideration today.
One point of clarification, and thank you, uh, Melissa, is that it's the Dania Beach Fountain right here?
Yes.
And so we were just saying Dania Point, I think.
Oh, my apologies.
But it's okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood it. It's the fountain here at City Hall.
Correct, the fountain at City Hall.
We don't have lights currently on the, on the fountain?
We do, but it's just to change them purple for the month of Alzheimer's, which is November, which is to just bring some more awareness and education to it for the month of November.
I, I like it. Um, I, I was just saying to, to plan for this for the future and for future events, we should probably get like lights that you could control the, the colors on in the fountain, and then we could change it seasonally.
For autism, for, yeah, for, yeah, St. Patrick's.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
That would be cool.
But, yeah, thank you so much, Melissa. Appreciate your presentation.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Any questions? No?
Nope.
I have one comment. Uh, as far as the lights, we do have, uh, filters. The fountain does have lights. We have filters that we put on it. For St. Patty's Day, we did change it to green, and for other days, we do change it, and the water, and the filter reflects off the water, and it does color the water.
So we, okay, so we could change it to purple already?
Absolutely.
All right. That's great news.
Very good. So we have consensus to move forward with that.
We have consensus for Alzheimer's awareness? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Appreciate it. Yeah, Alzheimer's definitely affects us. I saw, I, I lost an uncle to Alzheimer's last, last year. Yeah, and I'm, we've all been affected, so, um, that's, uh, thank you for coming out, and, uh, thank you Commissioner Davis for bringing that up. Okay, item 3.2 is 2024 Juneteenth Special Event Application. This is, uh, Parks and Recreation. Uh, do we have approval for the special event application for Parks and Rec? Okay, I have a motion from, uh, uh, motion from Commissioner James. Second from Vice Mayor?
Yes.
All right, second from Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Juneteenth Special Event Application moves forward, item 3.2. Let's go to, uh, proclamations. We had Memorial Day yesterday, and I, I need a retroactive approval for the Memorial Day proclamations that I presented, post 304 and 209. Do I have retroactive approval from the commission?
Yes.
All right, we have approval. Thank you.
One thing, um, mayor.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner James.
Yes, thank you. Um, I also did not put on here to do a, um, a request for Juneteenth for the next meeting.
A proclamation?
A proclamation, which needs to, I, I mean, I need to get some consensus for that because I want you to be able to present.
Okay. Do we have approval for, okay, yes. All right, go ahead, clerk. Wait, wait, wait. All right, go ahead.
Oh, um, I think we would be remiss. This has been, um, Mental Health Awareness Month, and we did not bring that up, so I, I did, it's not retroactive. I don't know what we would call it, but I really still want to make sure that we do a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, so.
Well, we have a meeting June 25th. Oh, no, or June 11th. We could do it at the June 11th meeting.
It's for May. I don't know if we just missed it, or I just, you know, I just still feel like that we should acknowledge that it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and it can be prepared and read into the June agenda for, in recognition of this past month. Okay. I just feel like we need to have, recognize it.
Okay, we recognize Mental Health Awareness, uh, for the month of May, and we'll have approval, you know, we'll read it in the June, the June agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, now we're gonna go to our administrative reports, and we will start with our deputy manager, Candido Sosa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents. Uh, my name is Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. I'm gonna be reading the City Manager's Report, and as the mayor stated, uh, the manager is not feeling well. She's home today. She, she really wishes she was here. It's her first time missing a commission meeting in 15 years, so it's, it's a very big deal to her. The, the manager's report is in section 5.1 of the agenda. If anyone wants to read all the details and review the backup information, there's quite a bit of, of valuable information. I'm just gonna highlight several, uh, key points from the manager's report that I wanna share with the residents at home and with everyone here in attendance. The, the city team has augmented, uh, their communications and, and, um, and ways of, of engaging the, the residents, and we've created a program called CORE. This is a new initiative for the city, and CORE, which is C-O-R-E, stands for Community Outreach Resident Engagement. Uh, we're gonna be visiting different communities and neighborhoods throughout the city. We're gonna have our various, uh, departments and divisions, such as the City Manager's Office, BSO Law Enforcement and Fire Rescue, our Public Services Team, our Building and Permitting Team, our Parks and Recreation Team, and our Code Compliance Team. And the purpose of these meetings throughout the community and, and various neighborhoods is to provide uh, key information and updates that affect each, each individual neighborhood differently. Uh, we're able to share with them the different projects, this from, from drainage projects, from street repavement, from, uh, new park improvements that are happening throughout the city. I have a calendar of, uh, some of these events, some of these, uh, CORE, uh, meetings. We're gonna start in June. They're gonna take place every Thursday, every third Tuesday of the month from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, starting on June 18th. We're gonna be meeting at Meadowbrook Recreation Center at 322 Southeast 10th Street. In July, we're gonna be meeting at PJ Millie Complex Center at 2901 Southwest 52nd Street. Uh, in August, on August 20th, we're gonna be meeting at Melaleuca Park on the North Side Garden. The address is 850 Northwest 10th Street. On September 17, we're gonna be meeting at Chester Bird Park at 1021 Southwest 12th Avenue. On October 15th, we're gonna be meeting at CW Thomas Community Center at 100 Northwest 8th Avenue. And again, the purpose of these CORE conversations, which is what they're being marketed as, is to share key projects, key developments, planning that are, that's, that will directly affect the communities, but also, if not more important, to listen to the residents of the, of the neighborhoods, listen to their concerns, to their recommendations, uh, to their feedback, and be able to, to, to address their needs. So we're very excited about these CORE conversations, starting next month, June 18th, at Meadowbrook Park. Uh, second key point from our, from the manager's report is, is, uh, and a, a project called Born Learning Trail Project, which was presented to us and led by our, our Commissioner Davis. Uh, a very, uh, this was a very successful project at the Ocean Complex at, at our beach. It was a partnership with various, uh, uh, community partners such as United Way and Habitat for Humanity. It, it also made it to the Sun Sentinel front cover page, highlighting, uh, how important this project is for families, for kids, and, and, uh, enthusiasm behind it. So we're, we're very excited to continue on working on, on partnerships, on projects that benefit our, our residents, our, the, the kids, and families throughout, uh, our city. And talking about relationships and partnerships, i- it's been an ongoing, uh, hard work from the city administration developing partnerships with, uh, developers, with investors, with, uh, business owners, with visitors. Uh, anyone and everyone that comes to our city, our number one goal is to create a relationship, create a partnership, and to see how we could bring benefits back to the city, to the community, to our residents. For example, we've, we've created, we've, we've created a park between City Hall and our, and our parking garage through a partnership with a developer. Uh, we've created a, uh, we're gonna be creating a design for a new drainage on Gulf Stream Road through, again, through another strong relationship. We're currently working on expanding our city garage, uh, potentially adding two additional floors, uh, with a partnership that we have, again, with one of our, with an investor in the city. So a lot of times, a lot of the hard work, a lot of the, the relationship building that happens behind the scenes are not really seen by the public, but a lot of hard work, uh, goes into building these relationships and, 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 and this bond. And, and we always wanna highlight and say thank you to, to our community partners that are, are willing to work with us and, and give back so much to this great community. Uh, I, I'm not sure if everyone has been able to drive or walk by the side of our city garage, but there's a, a beautiful art mural going up. It's almost completed. It's a beautiful panther, beautiful birds that are native to, to, to Florida. And, and we're very excited, uh, once this mural is completed, to be able to do a ribbon cutting and be able to have a brand-new sign, uh, designated this area as Art Park. We're currently working with our procurement department, and hopefully by the, by the, by the end of the summer, we're able to cut the ribbon and officially name this area as Art Park, which will have the art mural, or have the, the, the two sculptures. And we're very excited to, to open this up to the public, to our events, and to everyone that visits our great city. I have one more item I would like to, to present from the podium. I wanna recognize, uh, two individuals from our team, and also present to the city an award that the city received. Is that's okay, Mayor? Thank you. All right. Right, this month at a, at a state conference, our Pioneer Community Newsletter, which, if you remember, we distributed last fall to every single household in our city, uh, received of the first-place award by the Florida Municipal Communications Association. There were over 180 entries in, eh, into five categories, and the city of Dania Beach placed number one in our newsletter category. This was, we were able to achieve this success with two very hard-working individuals from our marketing and communications department. Uh, if you two could please come forward, Nanette Rodriguez and Susette Rodriguez. Nanette Rodriguez is our communications director, and Susette is our public information officer. And they submitted our, again, our pioneer, our new award-winning newsletter, uh, called The Pioneer, and, and we're very proud of it. They're currently working, I think they finalized the next, next addition to be, again, distributed to every single household in the city, and this is the award that the city received. And I would like to see if it's possible to take a picture with the Rodriguez, uh, team and the commission, please.
All right. Team Rodriguez.
Awesome. Thank you.
Why I gotta get over the podium? I'm in trouble. Make sure it's good.
Interns, come on down.
All right. I'm just gonna go ahead and hand it over to Nanette, let her say a few things about the award, about the newsletter, and when we expect the next, next newsletters, newsletter to be distributed.
This will be very brief. This, this award is really not for our communications department. It's really citywide. Every single department is featured in that newsletter. It's about engaging and communicating to our residents, and that's what we do here as a, you know, municipal government. That's one of our jobs that we do, and so we're, th- this is really for, for everybody, for all the departments that actually work hard with us in, uh, in with us in uh in making that happen, so, thank you. And the the next one will be coming out soon, and we will have a banner on it that says, "Award-winning magazine." All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nanette, thank you, Susette, that concludes the manager's report, Mayor.
Thank you, Candido. You know, uh, to be first place and to win an award, I I'm sure a lot of the cities that we went up against have had newsletters for years and years and years. So the 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 fact that our very first one wins the award is very impressive, and uh thank you all for your hard work, and like like they said, the whole the whole entire city staff is involved in it, and it's very informative for our residents, and looking forward to the summer edition coming out. So thanks for that, that's great news to learn. All right, up next, we have our city attorney administrative report.
Thank you, everyone, uh Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to remind you that on June fifth, the Hollywood City Commission Meeting will start at one o'clock. I do not have a time certain for the item that the city manager presented to the city of Hollywood, but if you would all um either attend or or call your your next-door neighbor commissioners um to support this day request, so that we're not spending funds, and hopefully can come to an amicable resolution of the large user solid waste agreement. Uh wastewater agreement, excuse me.
Wastewater.
And the last thing I want to say is, go Panthers.
Go Panthers, thank you, thank you, Eve. All right, city clerk, reminders?
Yes, so June eleventh, you have your CRA board meeting at five P M, and then following that, you have your regular city commission meeting at seven. Then your next regular city commission is scheduled for June twenty-fifth at seven P M.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to our public safety reports, we'll start with our captain, Jason Turella. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, Deputy City Manager. Good evening. So we had a really busy couple of weeks, and I'm gonna condense and highlight um a couple really good arrests we had. So through an investigation over the past six months, that was led by our Threat Intelligence Officer with our our regional crime division, with our Dania Beach Criminal Investigations and our Crime Suppression Team, we had a documented criminal informant that gave us some information, referenced narcotics sales at a location in our city at twenty-one seventy Southwest Fifty-first Place. We conducted numerous buys out of that location, where we got numerous controlled buys of fentanyl, marijuana, and cocaine. Last week with our, last week, we went in front of a judge, we drafted, we applied, and we were granted for a search warrant. With our B S O SWAT team, we ex- who executed the tactical portion of the search warrant. Uh upon entry, we safely secured the suspect without incident. C S T then conducted the search of the residence, and inside the suspect's bedroom, we located a Glock seventeen nine-millimeter with seventeen rounds from a gun that had recently been reported at Palm Beach County, eighty-seven grams of M D M A, three grams of fentanyl, two grams of crack cocaine. That target suspect, who was the target of our investigation, was a eight-time convicted felon. He is on felony probation for attempted first-degree murder, where he was just recently released from prison after twenty years. That subject is being charged with armed trafficking of M D M A, possession of firearm by a convicted felon, grand theft of a firearm, possession with intent to deliver fentanyl, possession with intent to deliver cocaine, and uh felony V O P for his um first-degree murder charge, attempted first-degree murder charge. So that was a very good arrest. Over the last six weeks, uh previous to this arrest, we had an increase in burglaries on our southeast section. So once we develop a a pattern of crimes, we automatically put a burglary or an auto theft or whatever the crime is operation in place. So our C S T team, our C I team, we put an operation in place. Um very shortly after putting together this operational plan, we were able to identify a suspect who we believe was targeting our southeast section. Through our investigative means, uh we were absolutely able to identify him for numerous crimes. Our Crimes Repression Team was able to locate this individual at eleven fifty South Federal Highway. He's another individual that was recently uh released from prison. Um to date, we were able to charge him with two counts of occupied burglary residence, two counts of burglary conveyance, two counts of petty theft, and we believe he is responsible for many more crimes, and that investigation is continuing. Since we've arrested this individual, the um increase in crimes that we discovered on the southeast section has all come back to normal levels. Um so we absolutely know that he was responsible for the vast majority of those crimes. Earlier this week, we got an L P R hit for a stolen vehicle that was traveling westbound on Sterling Road. Two of our deputies followed the vehicle. Once C S T got in the area, we were able to safely follow it with the armored cars. Once the vehicle pulled into a location, we tactfully took it down, and we safely got both of those uh individuals who are inside that vehicle in custody, and we were able to recover that car. Uh yesterday, with another stolen vehicle that was stolen out of Dania Beach, and we were able to track it. Um our Dania Beach deputies tracked that vehicle into North Lauderdale. We got the assistance of the city North Lauderdale de- uh deputies, and we were able to track that vehicle to a residence in North Lauderdale, where we were able to safely apprehend the driver of that stolen vehicle, place him in a custody, and also recover that vehicle, which was a uh twenty-twenty-one Mercedes G L B. So we got both those cars back this week, back to the rightful owners. Um our homeless outreach team continues to be very proactive with their enforcement. Um over the last week, we've made eight arrests. Um they're continuing their checks along the F E C tracks, all their directed patrols. We made two arrests the last week and a half at Chester Bird Park, one for felony narcotics, and one for trespassing. We made two arrests over the last week and a half at Frost Park for trespassing as well. These are all individuals that have previously been trespassed from Frost Park, told not to come back, you're trespassed, and they've chosen to come back. At this point, you know, they can go to jail. Um our deputies have also um conducted in areas that we've identified as problem areas and were legal pop-up gatherings. So over the last five weeks, we've adjusted the times of our teams coming in on the weekends much earlier in the afternoon, and we've also put a directed patrol in place for our patrol to target those areas. Myself personally, I've driven the city the last two weeks on Saturday and Sunday. Uh Lieutenant Cooper has also come in, and we have not had any pop-up parties or pop-up events. The only uh people that we've identified have been people playing dominoes. Uh we've made contact with them, and um we've spoken to them and told them, you're more than welcome to play dominoes, but the barbecues, uh the the boombox, the D Js, that can't happen. Since the last four weeks, you haven't had that. So I'm hoping that our interaction with them, our talking to them, discussions with them, hopefully they'll keep it at bay, um because we not have, we haven't had those issues in the last four weeks. And last but not least, um I'm very happy to tell the city that over Memorial Day weekend, we have, we did not have a single issue of violence in our city over the Memorial Day weekend, including our beach. And if you watch the news, um o- other cities, especially on the beach, they had multiple issues of violence, in our cities directly to the north, um where they had to shut their beach down. We did not have a single issue, because we have a very proactive law enforcement presence on our beach for our holidays, and we don't allow any of that kind of activity on our beaches. So our residents, our visitors can safely come to Dania Beach, enjoy the beach as it's supposed to be, and the word is out there, and I hope the word's out there for everyone, that if you wanna come to a safe, enjoyable beach, come to Dania Beach, and that's why we wanna keep it. Thank you.
Yes, uh, great report, Chief. Commissioner James?
Yes, I'm surprised you didn't touch on Sean Kingston.
The reason I didn't is because that's an active investigation, we have, we have another target.
Yeah, it was on the news and social media, that's that's why. Yeah.
I can tell you that 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 is part of our investigation. That investigation started at a Dania Beach um for a theft of a watch for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So what I wanna do is that Lieutenant Cooper actually, as my X O, she actually oversees our criminal investigations. So what I wanna do is that in two weeks, I wanna come talk about that, because we actually have another part of that investigation that isn't out yet. So once we tackle that part, I'm gonna have Lieutenant Cooper come in two weeks and discuss that. Um but yes, just so you know, that that case, that original first theft of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was from our city. Um and we're able to get that property back to that victim.
Heck of a watch.
Yes. Out of my prayers, Ranger.
I have an Apple Watch.
But we'll talk about it in two weeks, once I get the other part.
And the the last thing, uh you spoke about two arrests at Chester Bird. This just happened from randomly going there, or did you follow someone in there?
No, we're proactive, we have our deputies doing the proactive checks. And one of our deputies um goes out there, goes out there, and he already trespassed these two individuals past. He went there and they were back in the park.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Captain. Thanks for your proactive efforts, thanks for making making us proud, keeping us proud. All right, speaking of pride, we got, we got our fire chief, Sergio Pelissero. It it's pride month?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, uh city staff, and all the great residents of Dania Beach. So uh tonight, I can tell you that our police team and firefighters, as you know, went to the Dania Beach uh water safety event at PJ Millie. We assisted with um uh water demonstration, but most importantly, we showed off our hula hoop skills. Our firefighters attended Career Day at uh Dania Elementary, and we spoke about, they spoke about their job and what it's like to be a firefighter to all the kids. But also, our our canine peer uh crisis support counselor showed up with his, and he brought his dog named Oscar to meet the kids and uh talk to the kids about what Oscar does for a firefighter, speaking of uh, you know, um mental awareness. Our life sa- safety educators at Station Seventeen uh conducted their last training session for future car sick uh car seat technicians. So um we will have a lot of technicians out um in the bout. And um as you know, um hurricane season starts uh this Saturday, June first, so now is the time to prepare. Make sure you prepare a personal plan for you and your family. Uh make sure you have the necessary supplies you need, like water and non-perishable food, medications, important documents. Stay informed and monitor the weather, and know your evacuation routes. But most importantly, to our citizens, I could tell you that our team, and not just being uh B S O Fire and Police, but our team in the city, is ready to deal with this type of emergency. Every department here is trained and is ready to go. And lastly, last um month, we ran six-hundred-and-sixty-five total uh calls. A hundred-and-twenty-five were fire-related, and five-hundred-and-forty were EMS-related. And that's it for my report.
Any questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Are you still seeing a a high volume of concurrent calls out west?
Excuse me?
Are you still seeing a high volume of concurrent calls out of Station Seventeen?
Yeah, we still have the the concurrency calls will probably never go away, just because the way it happens. So we have, you know, a high volume of concurrency calls, but we're able to handle them a lot better now with that second rescue being here.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you explain what concurrency calls are?
Excuse me?
Can you explain what concurrency calls are?
Concurrent calls are basically, so when we get one call, here, well, I'll go in um at Fire Station One. You get one call, sixty-five percent of the time that you get the one, that one call going, sixty-five percent of the time, you're gonna get a a second call within a minute or less. So that's a concurrent call, and sixty-five percent of the time, you're gonna get the third call. So usually, we're able to, you know, because Rescue One was out, then you have to wait for Rescue Seventeen to get out here. Now, with the second rescue, we're able to meet that demand, and that's thanks to the city commission.
Awesome, awesome, great. Thank you, Chief. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? We're not on this consent agenda? Oh, no, yeah, sorry. Excuse me. Okay, we're gonna go to citizens' comments, uh we have two comments here, I see, uh Asher Soczewski, Soczewski? Come on up, Asher. Please state your name and address, sir. You have three minutes, and you can't give your time to anybody else, or no one else gave their time to you.
Thank you, uh Mayor, uh Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Asher Sokrzewski, I live on fifty-two oh-one Southwest Thirty-first Avenue. The reason I'm here today is because I am extremely concerned about the construction occurring across the street from my, from my residence. Um I have talked to people in my condominium, and not one person has expressed anything that they view favorable about this construction. In fact, I have heard from people in the condo that they are thinking about moving out and moving out of the city due to this construction. One person in the condo even told me that they have decided to leave Dania Beach due to this construction. One of the big issues with this construction is the non-stop noise from seven A M, five days a week, sometimes even on Saturdays. It makes it hard to work for people who work from home, like my single mother. Another issue associated with the construction is the dust, which has gone into my condominium and has affected people's allergies. I was even told that there was a kid who was walking past the construction site after getting out of school, who was having issues breathing due to the amount of dust. I am also very concerned about the impact that this open construction site may have due to the hurricane season. I am concerned that these objects may blow into our condo. Finally, I am concerned about the amount of debris that this construction site has left. I saw a bunch today, when looking at the construction site, I saw a bunch of trash that was not on the construction site, beyond the grass. Um so I I urge the commission to consider doing a couple of things. First of all, I would like to see the construction site remove litter that is not on their construction site and on the grass, which is, I would consider public property, because it's not in the fenced-in area, and we do not have a sidewalk on that side of the street. I would also like to ask the commission to test the dust, the dust, because I believe it may be violating OSHA's policy on dust. I I, so I would like to see if there's more than fifteen milligrams and five milligrams for respirable dust averaged over an eight-hour work shift, because I believe there's a significant amount of dust. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Soczewski. Um uh Deputy Manager, I I think you could address uh some of his his questions.
A- absolutely, um good evening, sir. As as far as, you, this project is on Thirty-first Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, correct. The, as far as the dust, we do, we are working with the development. They do spray down the streets, we we daily inspect the roads. Uh we're 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 constantly ensuring that the area is clean. Uh if there's any debris, we will, we will cite the developer i- if he has placed litter or 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 is not picking up. So anything that that this development or any development in general, we do address it and ensure that they're following the regulations that they have to. As uh, we we go there first thing in the morning to ensure that, one, vehicles are not blocking the road, two, there's no garbage or debris on the road. And we even have made the developer implement a car wash uh voucher program. So if any vehicles near the development are being sprayed with dust or 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 dirt, the developer has to pay for that vehicle to be washed. So so we're trying to address everything that could negatively impact the community. Um additionally, in in reference to hurricane season, anytime there's a hurricane warning or an indication that a hurricane is heading in our direction, there's a process that our building department, our building inspectors, our co-compliance officers go to every single construction site to ensure that any material is tied down and that nothing could become a a flying missile, flying debris. So unfortunately, during construction, there there, you know, there there is dust, there is dirt, but but we are, we believe that we are working as much as possible to mitigate it, so it so it doesn't impact the community in a negative way. If there's anything that you feel at any day needs to be addressed, I'm gonna share with you my, well, I'm gonna have our our community development director share a business card. We could meet you at your property, and we could go over any specific uh uh matters that are, that need to be addressed, if that's okay.
Thank you, would I be able to ask you a follow-up question?
That would be up to you.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um so I'm just wondering, would there be any consideration to, I I appreciate the, everything you said, and I appreciate that it's cleaned with the dust, but I'm wondering if there would be any consideration to test the level of dust, to see if it would violate OSHA's policies, because with the amount of dust, I I think it may.
We we would research it, we would definitely research it, and and we'll work with our building official in addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, please, Commissioner Davis?
I just wanna say that um Asher, I did meet you at the Broward delegation at F A U, and I encourage you to come here, I didn't know if you would actually come and have your voice heard, but I'm so glad that you were able to come and speak out, because I do know that we have a team who cares about your quality of life, and so thank you for actually showing up and following through on your concerns in the city. And so thank you for actually showing up and following through on your concerns in the city. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the invite. Glad, I'm glad to be here.
Yes, sir. There you go, okay, yeah, speak with Eleanor. Thanks, Eleanor. She's great. All right, no, uh, thank you, thank you, Candido also for clarifying that for this young man. All right, up next, Public Comments, we have Joanna Grenette. Mrs. Grenette, please come up, state your name and address.
Hello, Joanna Grenette, four fifty Southeast Seventh Street, Dania Beach. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, how are you doing? Um, I come to you because I feel that there's a bit of misinformation out there. Excuse me. Marco, Commissioner Salvino mentioned at the last Commission meeting that the Historical Society should come forward with plans for the fundraising of the AC Frost House. The Historical Society can only fundraise for itself. Otherwise it would actually lose its nonprofit status. We're not like the Lions Club, there are different categories. However, in steps Joanna Grenette, citizen of Dania Beach, I can help with anything that, in regards to fundraising. I did actually also wanna bring up a matter in regards to City Manager Anna Garcia had mentioned in the, excuse me, March Commission meeting that she was going to bring a rendering in of the AC Frost House and how it would look in the place by the Nyberg Swanson House and the Women's Club. Now, um, I actually emailed her in between and she said that she was going to bring it forward for the May Commission meeting. I didn't see it last, the last Commission meeting and I don't see it on the agenda today. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I could, Mayor, if it's okay?
Please.
We, we did, we did seek, reach out to an architect to provide an estimate on how much a rendering would cost. The, the architect provided us the estimate and we, we shared it with the, with the Commission. But since this was not a budgeted item or something that we were giving direction to move forward to implement, we, we had to wait. We, we did send an email to the Commission and there was no consensus, there was no response as far as how to move forward. Until we get that direction, we, we cannot unilaterally make that decision of moving forward.
All right, so for the rendering, we just need a response from the Commission for consensus to the manager's email?
For the expenditure and where the funds come from.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess, yeah, well, I, I'll request the manager resend the email so the Commissioners can receive it, send your inbox. But, but we but we did get a RFP, right? We got approval for RFP.
We, we received approval to move forward with the RFP. We're working with procurement, we're working with our Public Services Department, our Finance Department to nail down the details to be able to, to put it out.
Okay.
On, the, the RFP is to move the house.
Yes.
Yes.
This is the rendering of where it would go?
Where it would go.
On how it would look between the Women's, the Women's Club and, and the Fire Station.
Okay. Well, we necessarily don't need a rendering, you know, if, if, if we can move forward, but well, we asked for the rendering, Vice, Vice Mayor said that we asked for it. We asked for it, then the manager sent an email out to all the Commissioners to move forward with it and she never received a response to actually move forward from, from the majority of the Commissioners.
And then the City Attorney followed up with that email as well, those two emails.
So, uh, you know, I guess we have to go back to the email or, or can we just get approval now for the? I think it's like
I'm pulling the email right now.
It was around twenty-seven hundred, I believe.
It was two, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We received it on April tenth, so, and the email went out May sixth. My email went out May sixth, Anna's went out earlier than that.
Commissioner Davis?
I just have a concern because I thought that it was supposed to, since it was presented in public, that we just put this on an agenda item, be transparent about, you know, the, what we're looking for and that we actually go through the right process and not just get approval through emails to move forward, that it's, you know, everything's fully transparent and everybody knows what's going on. I didn't feel comfortable with that because I was like, when did we start doing this? So I just liked it if it's gonna be an agenda item and it's gonna be something that we get consensus on, then we just put it on the agenda or we put it on something where we do consensus and we get consensus the way we get consensus with everything else. I, I'm not comfortable with getting consensus through email and that's why I personally did not respond. Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to address it now?
Yeah, I think we had consensus from the Commission beforehand, any, already, you know, to move forward. And then the manager sent out the email and was waiting for, I guess, I don't know, second approval. Commissioner James?
Yes, I'm okay with addressing it now, since we're here at, at a public meeting. I still want an entire plan for everything. I would hate to spend little bits of money here and there just to turn around and not be, be comfortable enough to approve the entire plan. But if, if we need this to help us make a decision for a better plan, I, I, I'm in support of that. So I can visually see it and look at it. I mean, it might stop there, might stop the whole RFP there, but at least we have something in the meantime that we can discuss. I'm sure we have enough funds in the contingency. I would ask, our, our Commission contingency that'd be taken out from there since this is, this is a whole Commission decision on what's going on, in my opinion.
Okay.
So, um, just to be clear, if we have a consensus using Commissioner contingency, the, the overall contingency, twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, and do you want us to, well, that's part one. Part two is, do you want us to wait on the RFQ or the RFP until you see the rendering? Before issuing it?
Uh, I, I would say we, I would say we do the rendering. Well, the RFP, it's staff, yeah.
But, but it, it would just be mu- the people who bid, the companies will have to spend money and effort and resources to provide documentation for
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess just about what you guys are talking about in spots, you know, I mean, you're talking about twenty-seven hundred dollars to do a, a rendering to where it's gonna go. Then you, we still don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost to move it. We don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost to renovate it. And before we have numbers on that, I mean, I, I think we're spinning our wheels. I mean, we should have, once we decide how much everything is and whether you wanna do it, then we can move forward with the process. I don't know why we're looking at something to move and where it's gonna go if we're not, may not even approve something. And, you know, with the fact of the matter is that, you know, I think it's all coming down to who, who's gonna support a million or two million or three million dollars to renovate a house. And I think that's something that's of concern before you do anything because, and I didn't mean to insinuate the fundraising. I didn't know the process that you couldn't do that. But, you know, for something historical, uh, that's there, you know, there's a matter of judgment on what's, what it, how, how historical it is. And, and I think that, you know, getting into that discussion, I'm not ready for it yet. But the, the fact is, I think, I think the Commission has to have an awareness of how much money they're asking the taxpayers to lay out. And I think that that's, I think I'd rather, if we're gonna spend some money, I'd rather spend the money on getting, getting the RFP. I mean, if it's a reasonable amount of money to say, this is what it's gonna cost us to do it and either take the loss or, or move forward with it at that point. But I just don't know how we can make a decision on anything without knowing what the cost. It's like going into a store and walking out with something, you don't even know how much you're paying for it. I, I don't think it's a fair, I don't think that's fair to us and I don't think it's fair to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
And I was gonna just say that, I think they just said that it doesn't cost really anything to do the RFP. It's the cost to the people who are gonna provide the responses. So you have, if you have people that are bidding on it and they come to us, they're gonna spend the time and the resources in their own companies and whatnot, or personal, whatever. That, that's the issue.
And, and I just wanna add that the RFP is just to move the house. It's not to restore the house. We, we won't know.
Uh, Vice, hold on, Vice Mayor?
How, how about, why don't we put this on the next agenda? To discuss it in some more detail? Cause I don't, well, because I don't really think, I mean, it's not something, it, it wasn't publicly noticed. It came up from a comment from a citizen, that's it. So it's not something where it actually was on the agenda already for us to flesh out and have discussions about and see what sort of information can be put forth to all of us in advance. That's all.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Salvino?
I think I have a right to speak up here and speak my piece without having a comment from the, the dais. You know, I don't know if, you know, that my comments are being properly understood, being understood. I just feel that we need to understand where we're going because this has not been one conversation or two. It's been multiple conversations. Instead of going through these conversations all the time, I just think you need to get to the point and decide what we're gonna do, that's all. And if it doesn't cost anything to get an estimate on what it's gonna cost to renovate it or to move it, then we can get the cost and present it and then we can make a decision, that's all.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm happy to have everybody comment as much as they want, as long as they want. But if something belongs on an agenda item, I prefer to have it under discussion and possible action item and discuss it in the format and the procedure that it deserves to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Yeah, you know, the Commission, we've had ongoing discussions about this. It, it's nothing new to us as a Commission. It's good that we got the RFP out because then we're gonna see what the cost is to actually move the house. I, I do agree with you, Commissioner James. You know, we, we wanna have an overall plan, but, but, but we really have to do it in, in phases like we do everything here. And phase one is to really move the house. So that, that's the biggest, that, that's like the biggest initiative right now, to get the RFP to move the house. Then we move the house, then we could, then we can focus on the restoration for the house. And we're gonna have companies in that immediate historical area that are restoring the Nyberg Swanson House, restoring the Women's Club. So we have, we have resources there and, and we could get those proposals also in the future. You know, I don't like to throw out numbers and just say one million, two million, three million because we really, like you said, we don't really know what those numbers are. But I appreciate your guys' support and at least us getting the RFP. It's, you know, I don't wanna get on the historical significance, but the first child of Barrett County was born in that house. I think that should be enough to save the property and also the architectural significance, the historical significance as well. Built by the founder of Dania Beach. You know, it's the Frost family, we have Frost Park. So it's, it makes sense, I think, culturally for our city. And if we can, I, I've, I've been reaching out as well to third parties to see if we could get individual donations from, you know, people that do business in the city as well. And, and I've gotten a, a good, a good response as well. So it's a step, but we did get the house. The owners agreed to give us the property and they signed a document giving us the actual structure, which is, I think that's a pretty significant move when it comes in to the grand scheme of things of moving the actual property. So once we move the property, then, then we can, you know, focus on restoring it. I don't know if you want, because what type of historical restoration do you want? That, that's, that's where it comes into play. Because, you know, we had Nyberg Swanson House, we had two proposals. We had one for four hundred fifty thousand dollars, one for one point two million dollars. We went to one point two million dollar one. So that, that's a huge, you know, that's five, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar difference. So that, that's all, I just wanna make sure that we do it properly. I think we're moving in the right direction. Do we need a rendering? I don't need a rendering to see what the house will look like there. If, if, if the measurements work out and it fits there, that's fine, fine with me. I'd like to see it there when it's actually there. But any money we could save to save the house i- is worth it. So if we don't have to unnecessarily spend money to see a rendering, but if that helps the Commission make a decision, then I'm in support of getting the rendering. And, you know, that's, that's what my email response was to Anna when, when she sent it out. But we did have consensus for the actual rendering to be seen. You know, i- if we don't need it to, to make a decision and we just wanna see the dollar amounts of what it's gonna cost to move the property, then so be it, that's fine. But at least I think we're somewhat walking in the right direction. We can't be, we can't, we're not so moving, but we're, we're getting there, we're getting there. And Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think phase one is to get consensus or direction if this is a project that we wanna tackle. I think that's the first phase. I don't think you move a house without having a plan in its entirety. So I think if we, we, like, having a plan could have the phases included in that plan. But the number one thing is to decide if this is a project that we want to accomplish. And I think that's where a lot of the discussion is coming in because we don't have the numbers. And we did spend way more money on the Nyberg Swanson House because we wanted to do it correctly. We didn't wanna halfway do anything. And if we're going to decide to renovate this house, I don't wanna halfway do it or maybe make a little bit disstone here or some certain elements. Either do it or don't do it. But I don't wanna save money in different pockets and not have a full restoration of the home. And then we're really throwing a lot of money at a project we really can't stand and be proud of that we've really, you know, historically, you know, renovated this, this property. And so I, I don't even know if you have consensus for the RFP after listening to this discussion because if it's going to cost the other businesses money to just put out the RFP to see if it could be moved but we're not even deciding if we're moving it or not, that's still a backwards decision. So I, I do think when we have a chance to have a longer discussion, if you wanna discuss it now, it's up to you. But that, that should be, I think, the first thing. And, and it's just hard to make that decision without having all of, all of the data and having the support of the staff, knowing where we're gonna find the money with everything else that's coming at us with trying to save our schools and all this other stuff, you know. So I just think that we have to sit down and get our priorities, this board, in, in check of what we want to spend our energy on, which projects, what's feasible for the entire city and the budget and the reserves and, and what we can actually accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Yeah, y- you guys know where I stand. I wanna move the house, I wanna save it, I wanna restore it. I wanna preserve our history in Dania Beach, preserve our culture. I think it's good for the future generations. It, it's definitely an educational piece and it'll enhance our historical park. So I'm trying to get whatever I need, whatever you guys need to make a decision to, to support saving this house. And, and exactly. So that's, that's what I'm asking you guys to direct the city on what you want in order to make a decision on that. And if you want RFP and, and, and you want a full restoration on it and the cost of moving, if you want everything all at once, then let's just get the approval for that and see what it's gonna cost and then we can make a decision based off of that. But I, I don't wanna keep flirting around, you know, with what, what should we do? Should we do this? It, it's, I definitely wanna make a decision. I don't wanna lose the house. But this is something that i- it's important to me and I think it should be important to, you know, the entire Commission. And I, I respect you guys for trying to make a decision based off of facts and finances and, you know, budgeting correctly for that. So let's make sure that we can do this leading into, you know, December because that's when the contract expires for us to have the property. So we just, you know, yeah, I, I, we could put it on the agenda, we could actually discuss it. But we definitely gotta get moving on it if, if we're gonna save the property. Vice Mayor?
Through the Mayor, Deputy Manager, wasn't there already a prior vote on this with the RFP?
There, there was consensus to go out, put up the RFP to see what it comes back with.
Okay.
To move, only to move the house.
So why are we talking about it again? I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, if we already had a vote on it.
From
It's about the rendering.
Again, it, it was brought up by our, by the Historical Society.
About the rendering.
About the status of the rendering. But I, I think, I think the real underlying dilemma is that there hasn't been a straightforward vote, direction, directive, consensus to do this. So, so things keep bubbling up.
And from what I'm, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm going to, I'm sorry. But I, I, I'm hearing at least two of us so far, maybe more, are saying that we Um, but I, I, I'm hearing at least two of us so far, maybe more, are saying that we want more numbers. We want to know how much it's going to cost overall.
And, and, and there's.
And, and, and again, and, and, sorry. This isn't like a drainage project where we know what to expect. This is something where although it might go in phases, we don't know what to expect. Am I, am I correct with that? It's not the same thing.
No, that's correct, but there is a, a way to know. Just like we did the Nyberg Swanson House. The only difference, we didn't have to move it. We know, we received verbal quotes because companies don't want to submit official documents cause, because it could be shared with their competitors. Our, the quotes were between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move the house. That wa- that's the first step. In order to find out how much it would cost to restore, we would have to, we would have to hire a historic architect that does an assessment. There's a cost to that. The historic assessment will give us a report that indicates what needs to be restored at, to what level. Then, then we have to put out a, a bid. Denture, if you could please come up and, and describe the process, because it's not as simple as one RFP for everything.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
Because it, it, it won't work, it doesn't work like that. There's different phases, but there's different phases when there's a commitment to do it. And we, from what it appears, we're not there yet. Could you describe the, the, the process? Once we hire an architect, the architect does an assessment, that takes approximately, could take six months.
Good evening and Deputy Public Service.
And the cost of, of just that.
Denture is right. What happened is that very similar to the Nyberg Swanson, uh, the architect first evaluate what we have, what we don't have, what is historic, what is not, because we don't know. After that, they, they started doing a design from mechanical to electric to plumbing to the structural. After all this determined, start designing and go through the permitting, not only the city permitting, also the Broward County Environmental Permitting and Historic Permitting as well. So usually it takes six to nine months to get all the permits, not only the design, only get the permits and design as well.
And, and, and how much does that assessment cost?
The last one, if I'm not mistaken, cost us about maybe half million dollar or maybe more. So maybe less, they're on that range. Because what happened is that including permit fees and including other, other environmental studies. Right now, for example, Nyberg Swanson, we have to go to another historic board in Broward County. We have to go through that and that type of board. Same thing with this one that we will have to go.
And the assessment is what you put out to bid? So then a company can construct, can renovate it according to the report that the architect does?
Right. What happened is that we have to RFQ this one. It's so specific, not like a drainage project, a roadway project and that type of thing. So we have to RFQ it. Usually it takes about couple of months that we have to advertise. So we will give opportunities for these companies to.
Well, let me ask you this, Denture. So.
Yeah.
That, that's, the Nyberg Swanson House, you guys had to do that because it was historically designated property. It's nationally historical, historically designated property. This property's not nationally historically designated, so I don't think you have to go through all the, the loops that you have to go through.
That would be a commission decision if we want to maintain it historic or we just wanna renovate it?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. If we, if we could. What I'm, what I'm trying to say with, to the commission is if we can save the house, my, my biggest thing is to save the property. You know, if, if we could restore it without going through all, all the, you know, historical designations and going through historical boards and we could restore it ourselves, that'll save us a lot of money. And then once we restore it, then we could get it historically designated. Cause right now it doesn't have the designation with the county. That's the whole, that's the whole point. So i- i- I think we're talking about two different types of, of projects here. One is something that's been nationally recognized as a historical structure after it was moved from the corner of where, you know, Walgreens is now on, on Sterling. And it was moved in, what, ninety-four? And then we got historically designated after. So this, we can move it and then you, you could restore it to our, our standards, to what the commission deems necessary. And, and then you could get it historically designated. So I think that, that, that would save us money, if I'm not wrong, right? And time.
And to be honest with you, Mayor, what happened is that these architects knows a little bit more than I do when it comes to the historic, nonhistoric. But, but we can do nonhistoric, but in general that they determine that if it is a historic or not, but definitely commission.
Yeah, look, look, it, it's a historically significant property to, the city of Dana Beach, we're recognizing that. But it's not, it doesn't have the official paperwork with the county yet. So therefore, yeah, it's just, it's just another house that we can move and, and fix it up, correct?
If, if the commission, yes.
Therefore, it, we don't have as many obstacles that we have to go through with the Nyberg Swanson. That's all I wanted clarification on. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Denture.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I think that helped us a little more, made it a little more clear.
No, not at all.
All right, guys. Any other comments? No? Seeing none? All right. Now we'll go on to the consent agenda. Any items the commission wishes to move from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
And to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Item made of business has been approved. Consent agenda's been approved unanimously. All right, now we're gonna go to bids and requests for proposals. So nine point one, please, Eve.
A resolution of the city commission authorizing the award of ITB twenty-four dash ten to Mills Electric Services for the year forty-eight CDBG solar light project in amount not to exceed two hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, providing for conflicts. This is a public services item.
Good evening, commissioners, uh, city attorney, uh, deputy manager, madam clerk. I'm Colin Dolly from Public Service Department. I can speak on this item.
Any, any clarification? No?
I make a motion to approve nine point one.
All right, motion to, motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thanks, Colin. Got that foot back, back awake. All right. Item nine point two.
A resolution of the city commission authorizing ITB twenty-two dash eight entitled Southwest Fifty-Second Street Stormwater Improvement Project to ATC Engineering in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and eight nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, providing for conflicts. This is a public services item.
Good evening. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
Any questions? Nope. Commissioner James?
Make a motion to approve nine point two.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, now we're moving. Item nine point three.
A resolution of the city commission authorizing ITB twenty-three dash fourteen Southeast Drainage Ready, retrofit project phase one to Rickman Construction Florida Inc. in an amount not to exceed sixteen million eight hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-four cents. This is a public services item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Finally, we have Southeast Drainage Project that we are ready to award. So we have one agreement left from Florida Department of E- Emergency Management. We are hoping to bring that item to next commission and we will be ready to start.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that. Very happily.
Motion to approve from Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes, it's been a very long time coming, so for almost seventeen million, I will second that for our Southeast Stormwater Project. I, I have a question after that, though.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
I have a discussion. Aye. Never mind.
Go ahead, Commissioner James.
No, I, I just wanted to know like the timeline, once you all get started. Like when you come, when you come, um, back next meeting and we approve that, what is the timeline?
We are going to have a pre-cum meeting as soon as possible. Contractor text me today and he texts me every day. So he would like to start as soon as possible. We doing our signs within a month or two that we will start the construction.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. But in the meanwhile, just wanted to let you know that we install tidal valves throughout the whole city, because I know that our residents are suffering and we try to do whatever we can do in the meanwhile. We installed twenty, uh, tidal valves throughout the city for outfall to not the water coming in. So that, that might help a little bit, so.
Okay, and then while, while this construction is going on, if it's happening during our rainy season or the hurricane season, how are we gonna mitigate that if our drainage system is being worked on?
As typical, our public service team with the vacuum trucks and pumps and everything, we will be ready to.
Oh, so y'all just not gonna sleep?
We always there for them.
That's what I hear. Okay, well, let's just ha- have the best of luck hurricane season, um, starts officially, I think, in a couple of days here. Um, and so we're gonna hope for the best, uh, non-active Dana Beach hurricane season.
Okay, we don't have any quasi judicial and public hearing items. We have no first reading ordinances. We have no second reading ordinances. So now we're gonna move to discussion and possible action. Item thirteen point one. This is city issued shirts. Is this still on the agenda? This, this city issued shirts for board members and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
So I'm guessing that you've all received the same phone calls and emails and convers- had conversations with some board members who, um, would really like to have, um, shirts of some kind that show that they are involved with the city a- as board members. I've had multiple discussions. There's something that's come up from, it's happened over the years. I, this is not the first time that this has come to my, to my attention, anyway. I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have shirts. I think, though, we need to be very, very careful if we do it to make sure that they don't, look like employee shirts, um, or official city shirts. And that if it is something that's going to be done, that it, it's very clear that it, this is not an employee. This is a, either a volunteer or a board member, not, um, somebody official with the city. That's, that's, I, I wanted to bring it forth to discuss it, see what people think about it, um, out in the open and, um, go from there. So have at it. Anybody?
Commissioner James?
No, I agree with that, um, because, you know, there are certain perks that we receive as elected officials and employees. Um, and although each of our appointments are serving on a volunteer board, uh, I, I have huge concerns about that. That's one of the reasons why I just said no to it. I'm not sure if we can get like a different type of shirt with just a big D on the back or something else that just looks more like of a volunteer. Cause even board members, we serve as board members at CRA. And so, um, we really have to be careful when it comes down to that, because we're, I, I don't approve it. I, maybe a pin that says, I, I don't even know. I don't, I don't know. It's just, it's just a very, um, slippery slope to go down when we're talking about. And, and I get it, I understand it, but at the same time, I, I think that can be very dangerous for the city as far as liability.
Commissioner, I know you want to go.
I think you could, I think you could put a shirt out there that, um, you know, that whatever color you choose and so on. Um, and without putting a logo on it and just put on there, um, and I think I'd put big letters, volunteer. And by saying volunteer, that means that you give a volunteer, um, historical president. So, I, I'm just, that's what Joanna, but my point is that it doesn't, it could just say volunteer. But says volunteer, I think we may be able to get away without saying a city employee or, or an elected official or some of the sort. But I think, um, if you put like volunteer on it, it might be a way out, I mean, just a thought. Big letters, volunteer. Well, D on the back doesn't sound too good.
Well, I, I don't, am I, can I?
Your own?
I'm sorry. I, I mean, I, the people who have approached me about this, I've made several suggestions. One was volunteer. Put volunteer either on the front, on the back, something, so it's very clear. Um, didn't like that. Um, I also suggested no logo, just say board member. Uh, because the example that was shown to me of one from another city, actually a county, um, did not, I did not see a logo on it. It just said board member. And, and I'm not opposed to doing it. I'm not opposed to, as I do think it would encourage people to maybe wanna be on the boards, but I do think we have, there has to be a significant distinction, so that there, it's very clear that this is not an official city employee. That's all, that's all I'm saying. So I, and I just wanna hear everybody's opinions, cause I know they've been approaching all of us and we can't talk about it, so we're here and we can talk about it.
Yep. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I did receive the same phone call as well and I just wanted to, um, I, I did say that I know the Historical Society has their own logo, with the Green Advisory Board created something for their board. So I suggest that if you wanted to create something for your board that is not, um, that cannot be mi- misconstrued or misrepresenting you yourself as a city employee, then, um, we could look at that. I even talked about some of the things that are approved out here to buy, you know, that we already have in our little store and look at different options. But, um, I'm very concerned about, um, people seeing the D, because right now, for as long as it's been out there, five, six years or however long it's been out there, uh, people associate the embroidered D with city employees and people who are hired by the city. And so we just don't want people to make that mistake. So, um, you know, I, I had different options as well and I had concerns about the way that it came to me and the timing that it came to me. So I really wanna make sure that we, um, make it a big difference between a, a volunteer and an employee. Thank you.
You wanna hear what I have to say?
Please.
Uh, I think we should just scrap the shirt idea and, and just give out plaques. That sounds good to me. Thank you for your service on the advisory board. Here's a plaque to hang up on your wall. That's, that's. Not with advisory board members. They, they were invited. You know, they get invites to, to functions also. So, yeah, I, I think we just avoid the shirt and everything altogether. And you, you put the city logo right on the, the letter of recognition. Yeah, and, and that's, that's nice, because the, these folks are volunteers and, and they definitely deserve some sort of recognition, which, which is nice.
And there are some that actually come to events.
Yeah.
They actually do show up and they, like, we have ribbon cuttings at different park events. The Parks and Rec Board shows up. A lot of them do. Um, you know, different, and, and I, and I do appreciate that. I just, I, I know that there's concerns with it. I have my own concerns with it. I've expressed those concerns. Um, but I know this is something that is, has been very persistent and is probably going to continue to be persistent even after this meeting, as I see where it's going. But, um, but I, I just, I felt like it was an opportunity for us to all speak our piece and kind of get it out there, so that it's not, um, if we vote on it, we vote on it and it's done.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I, I'd say there's a time limit too. You gotta be on a board for at least a year to get a plaque, right? You can't, yeah, you have to serve at least one full year and, and you get a plaque and, and it could be signed by the person that appoints you, right?
Sure.
Sounds good?
Signed plaque?
To move forward? Signed plaque, yeah. Yeah. I, it, people definitely deserve recognition, especially on those boards. It's a thankless job. And, um, it's nice that the commission i- is considering this. Yeah, so we're doing, uh, yeah, I think we're doing the right thing there. All right, so, so we can move forward.
So is there a consensus to, to scrap shirts or is there consensus for plaques or both?
Just plaques, no shirts.
How about, I think the consensus is to scrap the shirts and maybe we can decide on whatever the formal thing will be at another time?
Yeah, yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, I'm sure, we, we got enough people that make enough plaques around here. We could come up with something good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, on to thirteen point two, Eve.
A resolution of the city commission author- amending the city ceremonial items policy, providing for conflicts and an effective date sponsored by Commissioner James.
Oh, sorry. There you go, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, speaking of, of plaques and ceremonial items, um, I, I think that there needs to be an amendment to our current ceremonial items policy. Um, I am a person that thrives well on a team and I've always tried to, um, be inclusive of everyone. I think that whenever we're giving something to the public with taxpayers' dollars, that is not coming from one individual on the commission, that it should come from all of us. Um, and either it's stated from, you know, the mayor and the commission or however that is. But if we're, if we're doing a plaque, um, if it's something that is going home with someone or something that is, uh, presented and put here, I think that it should include either everyone's name or no one's name. I'm not sure what my other colleagues feel about it. I had spoken with the city manager several months ago regarding this. Uh, and I followed back up and she advised me that it had not been discussed on the dais. Uh, so I'm here to discuss it. Don't know how you all feel about it. I would like to, uh, mandate that and be more uniform and consistent in what we're doing when we're talking about plaques and keys and. be more uniform and consistent in what we're doing when we're talking about plaques and keys and ceremonial items.
Discussion? Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I think that I didn't, well, I didn't realize that it wasn't, uh, already that we aren't, aren't all included. I thought anything that we presented to the city was always by the, whoever it is, like when we do a key to the city, it's not presented just by one person, is it?
No, it's not.
Is it? Huh?
It's by the city commission. I, I, I think the proclamations they put like sponsored by and there's a name up top.
A proclamation, my, a proclamation's a thing, but I would say plaques or, uh, like if we give away plaques or something like that, it should say from the commi- mayor or the mayor's commission or their commissions or the,
The mayor and the commission.
Whatever it is, something like that. I think anything is, I, my opinion is, I, but I didn't realize that we weren't doing that. I always thought that we were always inclusive of one, uh, you know, I, I don't know of any reason, is there anything that we have that's, uh, that's out there?
Right there.
What?
The plaque right there that, that wasn't approved or brought forward, I mean, we, we said, yes, we'll give, uh, the art away. But it wasn't sent to us for any type of approval on it. It has one commissioner's name. It doesn't have anyone else's name and I just think that we just need to be uniform. I mean, there are a lot of initiatives that each of us bring forward and I think that, you know, I mean, you can laugh, it's not funny. I mean, I've discussed this several months ago. This hasn't just come up. I've discussed this several months ago. Because I, I didn't agree with it then. I don't agree with it now. I don't want it to just fall by the wayside. I wanna discuss it. And if you all don't agree, you don't agree. If you do, we move on.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I was just gonna say that if it's something large and you can put everyone's name on it, like there's different plaques within the city hall that have multiple names. We have the one from the cemetery. We have other things where it has everybody's name on it. If it's a larger item, I think it should be everybody. If it is, um, something smaller like a proclamation or a key to the city, it could just say the Denny Beach City Commission. Um, and if you, if you wanna put on there who sponsored it, I think that's fine. But I, but I think if it's something, I mean, like we're doing for the proclamations, it says sponsored by. That's fine. Certificates, I mean, send out certificates. I think, you know, like there, I did the thing for, uh, Women's History Month. I, I, you know, I wanted to make sure that it, people knew it came from me. So, there's nothing wrong with that, you know, and that's fine.
You know.
But, yeah, but I mean, but I think if it's something, um, significant, um, like bigger, that's what I'm talking about.
Permanent, right?
Permanent.
Yeah, like a fixture.
Yeah, something that's gonna be on a wall, that's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be in a park on a pedestal or something like that, then I think, yes. And I think it needs to be, um, on a monument of some sort, then I think, yes, it needs to have everybody. Or, or ju- or just say the Denny Beach City Commission.
Okay, just like, just like you're talking about, something like that, like the, 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 uh, the, no, outside the door, the, the, uh, the air, the wind, the, the weather vane, thank you. The weather vane, you know, I mean, it was brought in on this commission. I, I don't know, is there something on that one out there that says the commission on it? Is there a plaque out there that was brought in by this commission or the mayor and stuff like that? Okay, see, so something like that would be there and I guess whatever you're talking about, I'm not sure over there. But, uh, but then the, then the, uh, art piece with the Snoopy the same way. I mean, when, what we're doing as a commission, you know, we,
Totor.
Sorry. All right, so, my point, my point is, I think that, um, things like that, it should, it should, my opinion is, it should all be included. If someone's sponsoring a proclamation, then a proclamation can be sponsored because, I mean, we wanna get into our namesay like that. We could sit there and put fifty proclamations out and I'm not, I don't think that's what we need to do. But I think anything that goes in big plaques, that, this or that, all of us should be included. But if it's a proclamation, it's sponsored proclamation. That's my, that's my opinion, I mean.
Yeah, we're a commission and everything should be presented from the commission, yeah. Everybody likes a letter from the mayor more anyways.
Listen to you.
Sorry, thought I was lighting it up a little bit, guys, sorry. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just think that, uh, when somebody brings an initiative forward, whether it is the Women's History Month and it's commission, and it's Vice Mayor Llewellyn's idea, she puts sponsored by because this was her idea and she deserves credit for her idea. Um, you know, so it can, so we all agree on something. But if you had the foresight and you had the idea to bring it forward, then you say sponsored by, you say presented by. And then that's fine. And then it is something that we all share in together. And that's, that's the way it has been. There hasn't been any problem with it until all of a sudden, you know, we wanna start talking about, um, you know, keys to the city. And I think that we need to make a big distinction between a key to the city, uh, which is one of the largest, um, honors that you can give to an organization or a person, and also make a distinction between, um, a proclamation, it's can be sponsored by, but that is official government document. I don't think that you lump a certificate of recognition in the same category as a key to the city or a proclamation. I should be able to recognize anybody as an elected official. If I wanna say, I think whoever's been a great volunteer, as a commissioner, I should be able to say, I think this person's a great volunteer without being like, oh, it's for the entire thing, you know? Sometimes people just wanna have recognition. And when you lump a certificate of recognition into the same category, it doesn't have the same scope or purpose. It does not have the same authority or formality and it doesn't have the same symbolism or recognition. So, I think that we don't need to put apples and oranges in the same category and you need to separate it. If you wanna have, um, an Earth Day certificate, then that's, you know, that's an initiative that I started. I want to have a sponsored by Commissioner Davis. And that's just simple and you should be able to do that without a big to-do and changing, having a whole resolution attached to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner James?
Uh, if there's no other further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I'll make a second.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion from, uh, Commissioner James. I have a second from Vice, Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Uh, any further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right, item passes. Yeah, and just to clarify, this, this, this resolution is, it's just saying that it's, it's, it's consistent and it's, it's a standard practice that the commission has.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, perfect. All right, so now on to thirteen point three, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission pertaining to Resolution twenty-eight dash eighty-five, which prescribes rules and procedure for City Commission meetings, amending the rules to include guidelines for presentations. Uh, this is sponsored by Commissioner James.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner James.
Yes, thank you again. Um, this is also something that we've discussed on the DIAS before. We haven't formalized anything. I wanted to get with you all to see, I mean, I put something together, obviously, but, um, without the input of, of you all, I'm not married to what I put together, but I do think that, uh, we do need to limit our presentations. I think that a lot of people that come here to do city business, I, we shouldn't be doing an hour or so of, of presentation. And so, I would like to limit that. I know in the past, um, at a commission meeting, we spoke about limiting it to like four presentations. Okay, we spoke about limiting it. Um, I supported that. I'm not, I was even told in the, you know, the meetings following that, that I couldn't have a presentation on there because we already had met our max. I'm not sure what has happened to it, um, but I, I, I do think that this, this needs a conversation in some direction by, by all of us and something that we can stand firm on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
So, I actually talked about this several years ago. Limiting the, the, the time, um, not necessarily the number, but definitely the time, um, for each presentation. Because it, I mean, we've had several meetings, I would say, in the last year that we haven't even gotten to city business till like nine o'clock. Um, and we can't have that because people are waiting. I've, I've had residents tell me point blank that when they're watching the meetings later on, they speed through all of the beginning part because they, it, it's, it just takes too much time and they wanna know what we're doing in the city and what we're passing. So, um, I, although I appreciate your suggestions and yours, um, I, I don't think it's necessarily fair to have just two city commissioners with presentations. Um, and I also don't think it's fair to, to city staff because in all honesty, I think the city staff presentations are usually much more substantive overall. Um, and I, I, I don't really care how many presentations city staff do. As long as it's, I mean, I, I'll trust you all to make the decision as to what you need to do and what you don't need to do. But for, for commissioners, I would say, um, each, all five can do a presentation, one each, five to seven minutes each. And, you know, there are gonna be some meetings where we have, like, Commissioner Salvino doesn't do presentations very often. I don't start now. Um, I don't do them very often. He doesn't, he'll do maybe one every six months or whatever. I'll do one maybe every, every other month or every quarter or whatever. So, I don't know that it's necessarily, you're not really gonna have a major issue with it if it, I don't think there's a problem with each person being allowed to do a presentation, but one, one presentation and limit the time on it. And I would say anywhere from five to seven minutes. Maybe if, if there's only a couple that time, that maybe they can go a little bit longer. But I, I mean, I, I remember saying at one point that if, if it's gonna be a time limit issue, if, if, if it's gonna be longer than, say, I don't know, ten minutes, then it needs to be a workshop. I distinctly remember saying that. Because if it's, if you're gonna take that much of somebody's time, it needs to be a separate meeting, not when we're sitting here trying to get things done for the city. So, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, she's right. I, you know, I don't do a lot of presentations and the reason I don't do that is because I think, uh, it's, to me, some things of, uh, each person's gonna have their own special feel of what they wanna do. Uh, and I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is sometimes they come up here and we don't have a limit. And I've seen speakers go for twenty, twenty-five minutes and that's, that's out of control. They're presenting a product to us sometimes besides just with their, uh, a presentation of what we're doing and so on. I think, um, without question that, um, there's five of us up here. I think that if we have, uh, maybe we should set like a time, a date that we, if we're gonna have a presentation, we need to have it submitted by that date. And if it's not, and instead of time limit to five minutes, if we don't, if that, if somebody doesn't submit it within, uh, that date, then if there's three commissioners that have it, they can extend it to maybe seven minutes for them. You know, I, I think that there's twenty-five minutes is what we should be allowing for presentations amongst all of us. And if three, if I'm not gonna give one up or she's not gonna give one, there's three of you, that means you guys can have eight minutes apiece on your presentations. And I think that should be enough and, and you'll have enough time to tell the people that you're doing a presentation on if we have a certain date. Like say we cut it off four days ahead of time before, or five days before the agenda, whatever. I don't know, it may be a little tough on the agenda because they print it out a little sooner. I'm just trying to figure out a way to, or, or just go back with, uh, you know, Vice Mayor said that if there's only three people on the agenda, there's only three cushions, then maybe we can let them extend it to ten minutes, you know, seven, eight, nine minutes. But I think you need to come to, uh, a thing on that because it, it just, it, some of these just drag out.
Okay, yeah, thank you, uh, Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just think that, um, when the agenda review is made, I, I think that can be an administrative decision because, um, I've seen where we've had ten presentations on one agenda and that's just too many. But, uh, overall, I think if you're presenting specific information, some presentations are gonna run longer than others. I say a maximum, very maximum of ten minutes, um, period. But try to aim for five to seven, but maximum ten as a whole. I don't think we should be trying to tell people who, who can put something on the agenda and who can and how many times they can. If it comes up and you wanna put something on the agenda, we're all elected officials, put what you wanna put on the agenda. And as long as it doesn't exceed a certain amount of, like if it's a very packed agenda and it's gonna go from five to like eight or nine or ten, then say, you know, you need to move that to the next one. But trying to, you know, limit the amount of presentations, um, for, you know, five minutes and say, oh, you gotta hurry up and get off five minutes. You know, you're not done. Then that's, you know, we, a lot of times we recognize people in the community and it goes over five minutes. So, you don't wanna, you know, have some, you wanna have some leeway in being able to allow some flexibility. And but ten minutes maximum, you should be able to do whatever presentation you need to do, uh, at a ten minute maximum. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner James?
Yes, I wanted to clarify, um, this had nothing to do with the city presentations about how long they can go. Because I do understand that, you know, Frank has presentations that are very, you know, in-depth and, and, and other people, when they come up here and they present certain things that we have to approve later on down the line. And so, um, I, I mean, I, I don't think it's appropriate really to have a whole lot of, uh, presentations from staff or whoever. That's gonna take up a lot, a large number of ti- a large amount of time. So, but whatever it is, we have to put some type of rules and regulations because there are several people that left, that continue to leave meetings because, um, the first part of our meeting is just way too long. And so, I'm open for suggestions. Um, if you all wanna say seven minutes, I'm okay with saying seven minutes. One commissioner said do one presentation, uh, a meeting. I just, I just don't want it to feel like we have not gotten to a single approval or the consent agenda to eight thirty, nine o'clock. I, I, I don't think that's fair to the people that, the few people that come. And then especially when it's a item, you know, and it's a lot of people here and then they have to wait and then we're asking to move items down and move them around, um, to, to be able to accommodate our residents. I think they come here to, you know, hear from us and hear about the city and the business of the city. And I think that's our job and our duty to do that. I think, uh, there was a suggestion, um, that if we want to do, uh, presentations as far as like awards or if we wanted to do any other thing that we're going to get other members of the community to have a different time slot. I did not support that because I am not coming early for a presentation. And so, I, I mean, that was a suggestion. I can appreciate a suggestion. Um, that's just not something that I was in favor of. So, I'm, I'm okay with the, the five to seven minute time slot for, for, um, everyone. If that's fine.
Vice Mayor?
I, I mean, because I was just calculating it out. If you say five minutes per commissioner, it's all five. Say all five of us have something and then that's twenty-five minutes. If it's seven minutes, it's thirty-five minutes. And city can still do, and it, it's very highly unlikely that all five of us are gonna have something on the same night. You know, and it just, and it just has to be managed. I mean, it's just, it's just one of those things. And I know the city's very good at managing, um, their own presentations. And I've been told as well, can't do it this time, there's too much on the agenda. And, and that's fine. And so, um, if that's fine, then you're good with that? All right. Do, did you make a motion?
No.
Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I'd like to touch on this. Well, I, I spoke to Eve about it and, uh, biggest thing, first thing I wanna do is I wanted to see how other cities operated. So, I looked around the county and I saw how other cities have operated. Some are very strict and, um, some, some leave it more open, all right? And I really don't wanna restrict us as a commission, as a city staff. When it comes to city staff, I don't wanna limit their presentation at any time because they, trust me, they're not gonna come up here and speak for thirty minutes if they don't have to. Okay, they, they wanna finish this meeting and get through it just as much as everybody else. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor too when it comes to staff and limiting their, their time to speak. But, uh, you know, we, we changed how our agenda functions, uh, what, in the last year or so. Me and the manager consulted and we, we had approval from the commission to change it because I wanted the manager reports to be earlier, the citizen comments to be earlier, so people can be more engaged and they could learn more about what's going on in the city. So, before the manager's report was like the last, the last item. So, we tried to change that to make it more engaging and, and so the residents can actually follow along a little earlier. When it comes to presentations, you know, I, I don't, I don't wanna put a hamstring on, 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 on our commissioners either. If, if, look, if I'm, if I'm gonna present something to you guys, it, it's, it's gonna be important. And I don't wanna be limited to five minutes if I have to, if I have to give a presentation. But a lot of this, from what I saw from other cities, a lot of this is discretion of the manager and, and, and the chairman of the board on, on what presentation makes it and what doesn't. If, if we do have a fat-packed agenda with, with seven items, you know, we're gonna have to shift it around. But we don't want that to lead to, you know, the chair blocking one of the commissioners' items, you know, just because. So, you, you don't wanna leave it solely on that discretion, but it should be on the city manager and the mayor's discretion and, and there should be some sort of dialogue regarding that. Sometimes these presentations, they get compounded and it, 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 it goes a little further than you want to. You know what I mean? I'm the chairman of the board. Do I wanna say, hey, no kids, you can't come up and receive your award because we're all trying to, you know, move along really quick, you know? Or I gotta, you know, I have a dinner, dinner appointment I gotta make it to? No. It's, uh, it, it, it's difficult when it comes to that. So, there needs to be really more kind of like, uh, self-awareness of what type of proclamation we are, what, what type of presentation. self-awareness of what type of proclamation we are, what type of presentation we're, we're presenting, how long it's going to take, who, who it's going to go to. And, you know, our last meeting for, for the teacher of the year and, and, and the students, that's going to take a lo- a long time. You know, and it's once a year, we do it every May. So that makes sense. But, you know, there's other, there's other items. So when we know that that's going to come up, then we kind of got to clear, clear some of the other items on the agenda. But say another commissioner has something very pressing, very important coming up, whether it comes to transportation or waste, or who, who knows what they have to bring up, you know, with, with everything that we're involved in. I don't want them to be limited and have to push off their pressing item two weeks later. So what I'm suggesting is that we go back to Eve and Eve gives us more examples from other cities and we, we can digest it that way. So, so we make a sound decision on this. Because I, like I said, I, I don't want to limit it to where we are right now, right now. I, 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 I think, like I said, we should be more self-aware of how we conduct our meetings and, and what type of presentations we're bringing or special presentations. When it comes to public comments, we certainly can limit that. If somebody comes out from another organization. Yeah, public presentation. Uh, yeah, um, um, well, public comments are three minutes. Yeah. But a public presentation, I'd say we limit that to, yeah, five minutes. You know, if, if you can't get your point across to us in five minutes, and then, you know, if the chair thinks you need a little bit more time, then that's fine. But like I said, I don't want to have a certain organization come in and then you just cut them off right at five minutes. Because sometimes people need just a little bit more time. You guys see that up here. You know, some of these folks come up here, they never did public speaking before, they get a little nervous, you know, they need a little help. So that's where I stand. I, we do need to regulate ourselves, okay? And we do need to realize that this is a business meeting and people who do watch the meetings or take time out of their day later in the day or, or, or fast forward and, you know, watch the YouTube meetings, we have to be courteous to them and to their time as well. We have to be courteous to our staff's time. We have to be courteous to our fellow commissioners' time. So I think what we really need to do, like I said, is to have more of that self-awareness. Some meetings are going to be long, okay? And I'm, I'm proud to say, I think we only had maybe one meeting that almost got to midnight and that was probably about it. So some, some cities have meetings that go till two, three in the morning. And, you know, this meeting's taking a little longer than it should, but we're, we're, we're under nine o'clock. So if we could conduct business in two and a half hours, I'd say that's a pretty good time. But, you know, really, if we, on some meetings, if we focused, we could probably get it done in under an hour and a half, an hour and 25 minutes, you know, if, if you say. But that's, that's being like a speed demon. I think we've done that maybe, you know, half a dozen times from, from my recollection. But that, that's just what I'm getting to. I, I want to look at how other cities do it so we can all see, hey, this is how Fort Lauderdale does it for public presentations, for their staff presentations, for their commissioners. This is what Hollywood does. This is what Weston does. And, and, and we could come up with a best practice from that. But I just, I don't feel comfortable limiting my fellow commissioners on, 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 on time that you have. And, and, and especially, like I said, with staff, but I think we all agree that staff needs plenty. Yeah, staff needs time. They, yeah, they could present everything that they, they want to us, that they deem as necessary. And, you know, they have to go through the manager as well for that. So yeah, some of it should be on the chair and the manager's discretion. And then certain things, I think we can probably regulate a little bit, but I don't, like I said, I don't want to just put a crutch on us, if that makes sense. That's pretty much where I stand right now. Commissioner James?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. To be clear, this was not limiting staff on how long they can present something. It wasn't limiting even, you know, and sometimes staff presentations include a presentation from someone else. So it's not limiting those things because when they are important in certain times, it asks us for dialogue. And so I think if we're not going to limit that, we, we definitely, as commissioners, can't sit up here for 15 minutes and give presentations. We're talking about the Parks and Rec Board that did teacher of the year and, and student of the year, but that wasn't us. That was the Parks and Rec Board. Again, that, that doesn't fall under that. That is important. That's something that was started a few years ago with, with that whole situation when, when I helped fund, fund that. So it's not that. It's, you're saying us regulate ourselves, but sometimes we're passionate about things. We want to get our thoughts across and we want to present what we want to present. And I, and I, I'm definitely not in favor, and not because it's you, Mayor, but whoever sits in that seat having the discretion over everyone else. If, if that, that can be very political. You can push somebody's item every single week because that's under that discretion of just the chair, the chair and, and the city manager. So I, I definitely think we need to formalize something. I have looked at what other cities do. I have, especially the school. Like they have certain time blocks where that's it. We're not, we're not talking about another presentation. They, they limit citizens' comments. They limit a lot of different things. And so we really are our own drivers. I mean, you're not going to really find two cities that are, that are the exact same. I think that we have been up here long enough. I'm going on my eighth year. And, and whereas I, we haven't really had, we've had some of these issues in the past and that's why we had the discussion on it. And we've tried to hone down on it. But then I'm not sure, when I asked what happened to it, they said that nothing was ever formalized. I have spoken with the city manager. I have spoken with the city attorney. We have had conference calls. This is not something that I just put together. I surely didn't write the resolution. And so, and, and so this is something that I have thought about. If you want to limit just the presentations for this commission part of it, I think that we, we owe that to ourselves. And, I mean, of course, if we have some, someone out there and we're having to have dialogue and we're having to make decisions and we're having to choose this vendor versus that vendor, this tree versus that tree, that doesn't fall under this. For me, it's more so of, I, I just can't, I can't handle us having a long bouts of presentations before we even get to see citizens' comments. I personally think citizens' comments should be further up on the agenda. I don't think that we should hold citizens of coming out here and, and sharing their, their concerns about what's happening in their neighborhoods so far down the agenda. We don't know. You know, people sacrificed to be here and then they're here for two hours and they can't, they haven't even touched certain parts of it. So my, my motion will not be to limit city presentations, but it definitely will be to, for us to limit ours to five to seven minutes. I think if we can't do it in five to seven minutes, we can find an, an alternate place to present certain things. If we wanted to present the children at Collins for participating in something, we can do it at a tree lighting ceremony. Like there are different ways that we can present and different avenues, maybe at a dang after dark, where it doesn't have to be at a, at a meeting, at a commission meeting. And so I just, that would, that would be my motion to, to approve it, but not to limit the city presentations or staff presentations, but to limit commissioner presentations for five to seven minutes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So now I have two thoughts. I was going to, I was going to try to compromise, as I do, and say five to seven minutes and we could leave it to the mayor's discretion if it needs to go longer. And if we have the ability to let it go longer.
To be clear, the, the proposal was to include a motion of second if you want to go longer or whatever. So either the mayor agrees and you all have consensus or motion of second, and you can go longer.
Okay. It can, it can be. I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to, you don't want to cut people off.
Under Robert's rules, you always have the opportunity for a motion of second to suspend the rules.
Of course.
So you always have the opportunity to extend. I guess that's the point. So as long as you know what your guidelines are, whether it's the five to seven minutes, you can always extend after that.
We also know in advance what the agenda is going to have on it. So, I mean, if it's a situation where somebody has a presentation that's going to take 10 minutes and there's only one other presentation on there, then that might be a situation where we can in advance say, this one can go a little bit longer. That, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I just don't, I'm not quite sure how to phrase it.
It's almost situational.
It is situ- it is situational, but the bottom line is, is, but the bottom line is, we can't have the same person doing multiple presentations at one meeting and going until nine o'clock at night before we start even getting to citizens' comments. It's just, it's, it's, it was a problem in the past. It's a problem now and it needs to stop. And, and I'm, you know, we, we need to, we do need to make a rule about it. We need to make a rule about it. And I, and I don't, and I agree with Commissioner James that it can't, it can't be some, one person's discretion to, on the whole thing because that does become political. It does become problematic. And it's, it, it, it just, it, it becomes very divisive and we don't want to do that. So we're doing a really good job of basically working together for the most part, and I'd like to see that continue. So I will second your motion.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that it is situational because I think about your presentation with the Boys State. And sometimes they come back from these things and they want to give their testimonials and they talk about how long they have been out there and the different things that they've done over the weeks. When I just did the Earth Day and celebrated multiple different centers, multiple different directors and managers from the community, this was a very feel-good event for the entire community. So just to say, you need to hurry up and get off the stage now when we're recognizing people in our community, recognizing people who want to do public service and come into government within our community. I think, you know, to try to hurry up and rush them off as, as if it's citizens' comments does a disservice and put dampers and puts, dampers the event and dampers the mood of the event. So again, I think whoever's putting the agenda together should be able to look at the agenda and determine how many presentations would be sufficient for that particular timeframe. And then after that, if it's too many, then you should be able to push it to the next agenda or say, we're going to have this one. This is an annual event. You should be able to look at it in advance. We do this every year. The Boys State comes back every year. This is going to be a longer presentation. But I think that's really an administrative decision and we don't need to try to, you know, damper celebratory events by putting a timeframe on them if it's beneficial to the community. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion? Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Listen to everybody's comments on this and it's a, you know, mixed view of what's going on in both ways. You know, I was going to say, you know, we could have just not passed anything and let you try to control it for a while and cut, cut down to five to seven minutes, but I don't think that would work. You know, if, if we did pass this tonight with this, this action and it didn't work after a meeting or two, I'd just put it back on for a discussion, possible action, and change it again back to what we want. So it's, you know, it's like one or the other. It's, you know, because, you know, you know, in respect to how many people we present, you know, rewards to or awards to or recognize, I get calls from people in the city that, you know, want me to recognize their family member that's been here for 60 years. And, and if I did everybody's phone calls, I'd have five presentations every week. And, you know, I've been here just like you, Mayor, and your family. I've been here all my life and I, a lot of people ask for that. You know, it's very difficult to sit there and, and, you know, give them an award because it would tie us up with that. I mean, I thank them. I said, if you want to come down and sit and talk on citizens' comments, you know, I'd recognize you at that point, but they'd never come down. So you know, the thing is, what I'm trying to do is explain to you that we can all get wild with all our presentations and we don't, and a lot of them, we don't pick out there because it's, it's, it just can't be done or we'll take everybody's time up. I think that if we, if we pass this tonight, and I'm willing to try that, in the five to seven minutes, or you got to pick five or seven. I mean, you can't pick one or the other, I think. But I would say seven minutes and then, and go from there. And then if it doesn't work in, in, in two meetings and I see it, I, I, I'm going to ask the commission that I can put it back on presentations for rediscussion and possible action again to change it to 10 minutes. And, and then that, that, that would be the maximum I would agree to unless there's a special occasion where you have the, the schools or something like that. But of course, it has nothing to do with them there. But, you know, I will support the, a seven minute for now to start off with and see, and hopefully the staff can regulate how many presentations are on there according to what the city puts on and what we put on. That would be my, my, my recommendation.
Okay. All right. So with the motion of second, it's for seven minutes instead of five to seven minutes. Okay. So we have a motion of second. Let's call it to a vote.
Commissioner Davis?
Hold on. Does that mean what the, still the number of presentations we can do is still in play?
One.
So it would be one, one per commissioner, seven minutes per commission, per, per presentation?
Per presentation, per every two weeks.
Per agenda.
Okay. All right. Then yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor LaWalle?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, Claire.
I will modify the resolution and send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to modify that resolution. Get it in. Okay, that's it for the agenda. Now we're on to Commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Joyce Davis.
All righty then. I just want to make sure that this last resolution here that we have, that this plaque here came from my contingency fund, my personal contingency funds. And so with that coming from my personal contingency funds and not from the commission, entire commission, then that would not be under this particular resolution. So.
Are you asking if the plaque should be changed? That's up to you all to decide if you're going to change it going forward. It's up to you all.
I, I think it's already come from my contingency funds and if anything going forward, then you can do that. But, you know, we've been giving credit where credit is due this whole time. And so, you know. I want to congratulate Nanette and Suzette on their award for the pioneer. That was huge. That was, I mean, it really was a lot of work. And when people come in, and I've gotten a lot of compliments from around the community that really understand the process a lot more. It was put in layman's terms with pictures and awards. I mean, and pictures and explanations of how our process moves forward. So anybody who's not in-depth in government really can get a good picture of what we do and the accomplishments that we've made over the years. So kudos to you. Over 180 submissions and to have, be number one is, is, is a great, 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 great achievement. And thank you for that. I will also say that we had a great award ceremony at Collins Elementary with Dr. Jackson, who just did a phenomenal job. Those kids playing on the violins was absolutely amazing. And we were recognized as partners. And on the same day, I was also recognized as mentor of the year for Broward County Public Schools. So we are an award-winning city doing award-winning things in 2024. And I love to see this celebration continue down this path. Lastly, was it yesterday? Yesterday. We had a wonderful Memorial Day service at the Legion, at the American Legion. Post 304 and Post 209 came together for the first time since I've been elected and had a joint ceremony at Post 304. It was absolutely beautiful seeing everyone come together in unity for the first time that I've seen that. So I would love to see more camaraderie between both of the posts. It was absolutely beautiful to see everyone come together in unity. And then we had a couple more celebrations after that. So Memorial Day was nice and full and a wonderful weekend, wonderful celebration. And lastly, I am a daddy's girl and thank all of you wonderful fathers for being great dads out there. And have a wonderful, happy, happy Father's Day to everyone out there. Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner James?
Yes. I won't, I won't go past the, the things that I've already attended that were spoken about, but just to reiterate, I, I do know it was from Commissioner Davis's contingency fund. It's still taxpayer dollars. It still falls under the same thing. We all still use our monies and do what we want to do. And it's still for the benefit for everyone. It was just our initiatives. And so if, if that, which, which I know can be proven, if that plaque was not approved by this board, which I, I know it was not approved by the board because it just popped up there. We approved the art and then the plaque kind of came with it. I, I do, I would like it to be uniform. It's, it's right there in front of everything. I mean, I'm not even sure what we're doing with this space. If this is going to go back to being like an art installation or not, but I, I would like, excuse me? Oh, thank you. I would like it to be changed to where it could say sponsored by Commissioner Davis. I have no, no problem with that. You know, if it's her initiative, but if it's going to say, it has, it should say everybody, everyone's information. I mean, that, that would be equivalent to us building a new C W Thomas Park and saying, oh, one person brought forth this and everyone's name doesn't go on it. The West Wing, that was my initiative from 2017. Everyone's name is on it. I just think it's decent and in order and, and that's how we should lead the city. And so I'm, I'm not sure, Eve, if, if you were recommending that us have a a consensus for. And so I'm, I'm not sure, Eve, if, if you were recommending that us have a, um, a consensus for it or whatever.
Can, uh, please, so that way we know what we're doing.
Okay. Anyone have an issue with that being changed to be inclusive of all of us?
Do we have consensus? All right, you have, you have consensus.
That's fine. And I think that, that means that we are out of time. And so happy Father's Day to all of you. Commissioner Salvino, you don't get to go. Uh, no, but, uh, good night, everyone.
Good night. All right. Commissioner Salvino?
She said I didn't get to go.
You're good?
Uh, no, no, I'm gonna go. We'll see. Thank you very much for, uh, the Father's Day. Uh, I appreciate that. I am a good daddy. And, um, I, I want, I hope everybody had a great Memorial Day for, um, memories of, uh, what our country belongs and how our, how we got here. So just wanna say that. And again, uh, you know, it's again to the staff out there. Uh, Nanette said that, uh, for putting the, that together and just the things that we do with, you know, development, parks, recreation. You guys do, everybody here does a great job. So proud of our city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor LaWalt?
I also wanna congratulate Nanette and Suzette. Um, that's the first time that we did this, right? First time, the first issue and they won. That's awesome. That's a, a feat. Um, Memorial Day was wonderful. It was a nice turnout. Um, at every event that I went to, it was a very nice turnout. And, um, it was, um, uh, it's always a, a somber day, um, but it was nice to see people gathering together in, in unity and, um, enjoying a barbecue or whatever and just having some time together, which was nice as well. Um, I also went to the Collins Elementary Award Ceremony and I brought back the award that they gave to the Dany Beach City Commission, which is a partnership for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We reached for the stars and we found you, is what it says. In recognition of your commitment and dedication to the students of Collins Elementary. So I was happy to accept this along with Commissioner Davis, um, at the time. And I wanna bring it back and I'm going to give it to Maxine so that you all can find an appropriate spot for it.
To hang it up.
So, to hang it up on behalf of all of us. Um, happy Father's Day and that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, first and foremost, look, we have a lot of rock stars on, uh, our commission, especially our, our women commissioners. No, no offense, Commissioner Salvino, but, but, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Davis, she mentioned it briefly, but, um, she, she got mentor of the year with Broward County Public Schools. So that's a hell of an award and, uh, she definitely deserves recognition for that. Well deserved, well deserved. I know you worked very, very hard. And, uh, that's, it's, it's, it's great, great for you to bring more recognition, more awards back to our city. So great to see that. And yeah, you know, we, we had Memorial Day yesterday. Thanks for all the commissioners that came and supported. Uh, the American Legion, it was great supporting post two oh nine, post three oh four. Our other commissioners went out states of Fort Lauderdale. I didn't get the invite to states of Fort Lauderdale, but I'd go out there. And, um, it, it was just very humbling to see. And our police chief was out there as well, as long as our XO Cooper, they came to the American Legion, uh, post three oh four. And the, the Legion posts are, are very grateful for our commission, the support that we provide them. And i- it's great to work with them. It's great to work with Commander Anderson at post two oh nine with Boys State and, uh, work with Gunny over at three oh four with, with all their projects. And they do, like, if, if you ever have something you wanna do or give back to the community, you can just reach out to one of those two guys and, and they'll kinda find a solution for you. And i- it's, it's great to see that part of our community come together. And they're also very appreciative of Dany Beach being a Purple Heart city. So, um, you know, we, we, we have all the love for, uh, our, our military posts and our veterans here. And, um, like, like Commissioner Davis said, two oh nine and three oh four coming together. And, uh, they're strengthening. They, they are. You know, American Legion posts overall are kinda struggling in, in a nation. VFWs even more. We don't have VFWs, but we have two Legion posts. And, uh, from the time that, that I've been here, uh, just to see that, you know, I've always been involved with the Legion, but to see them improve even more and to interact with, with us and the commission and the, the way our commissioners interact with, with our Legion posts is, it's just awesome. It's just awesome. And, uh, you know, thank you all for that. And okay, so everybody can catch the second and third period of the Panther game. Good night, everyone. Meeting adjourned. It's one nothing Rangers. Comeback time.